Beth, are you ready for the meeting?
Okay.
We'll start the meeting with a prayer followed by the pledge. Father God, we turn to you this morning. We thank you for all you've given to us and we pray you would just direct us, grant us wisdom as we make decisions for the county. We pray for those that wear a badge and in a uniform that protect us and we ask that you would keep them safe. And Father God, we just ask that you would instill peace in our land again of DOD terrorist incidents. We just ask your blessing in Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Minutes. Will it be sent via email? Any corrections or alterations? If not, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, on the favor.
Aye.
Aye.
During our last meeting, from then till now, we've had two payrolls, number 24 and 25. Number 24 was a total of $212,848.56. Payroll number 25 is $200,880.92. We had a total claims of 232 claims totaling $371,578.12.
Motion to approve payroll and claims.
Second.
On the favor.
Aye.
Three, zero. First, that's mine.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have 88 inmates and 11 are DOC.
DOC's going up?
Well, again, these are all generated by our own numbers. They don't care anybody else. That means they've just had sentenced, circuit court sentenced.
Converted. So do we get to charge at the DOC, right then?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Ed and Toby.
I think we have some bids. Do you want to do them first or you want to let Roy look at them while we're doing some other stuff?
Let him go through them while I'll make sure they meet their prayers.
Thank you. I'll give it right back to you, I promise. I did. Is it? Dang it, I'm not dressed for that. What did naturally? Let me kick that around a minute.
Okay.
It's fine. Thank you. Today or tomorrow?
Either or.
Okay, probably tomorrow.
Okay, that's fine. Mine's short and sweet. Like I said, the only we have is so bids first, but are you ready to do that?
Ready.
I've got one here from US Aggregates. I'll just name tens, 53s and 73s. Tens, unit price $11. 53s, $9.95. 73s, $9.95.
There's the 53s and 73s. Same?
Yeah.
State and commercial.
Yeah, because I don't have the... ours is the commercial.
Commercial?
Yeah.
Okay, so the 53s and 73s for Irving is $8.40 per ton and the number of tens would be $10.50 per ton?
And they probably have three different quarries there listed. Commercial, state, yeah. They have three different quarries there.
Oh, I see. So $7.95.
That was out of the Bluffton quarry.
Bluffton, okay. Huntington is the 53, 73 is $8.40. The Bluffton, 53, 73, $7.95. And Montpelier, commercial at $8 per ton. Okay.
I've got two bids. My first one is Rock Creek quarry. I have 53s at $6.95 a ton, 73s at $6.95 a ton, elevens $12.45 a ton. And I have the Stone Street and 53s at $9.30 a ton, 73s at $9.30 a ton, and elevens at $11.80 a ton.
And make a motion to take these bids under advisement, give to the highway superintendent to bring back with his recommendations.
Second.
Motion, second. On the favor.
Aye.
Thanks, Bill.
Three, zero. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Just an update on some projects. The project on 300 West, 3890 North, they did get the hot mix put on that, so all our hot mix projects are done for this year and everything's covered up and stuff, so it's a good thing. The project on 700 West between 11 and 12 South, we do have the base stone hauled on that. There's a tonnage that we hauled. Our goal was 7,000 tons, but we'll do some touch up with that in the spring and use the rest of that tonnage if there's a low spot or something like that. We did start the dirt work last Friday on the project on 12 Southeast of State Road One, so hopefully the weather cooperates this week and we can get that done and we'll try to get the base stone down on that and just the other stuff that we've been doing back home. One thing that the bridge inspection had and we're trying to do some of this is just cleaning some brush around the bridges. Some bridges had some brush around, so we'll go around and try and do some of that stuff too. That's all I've got.
I assume it's the utility company doing the tree work on 303 over by Liberty Center. It's in the right way, but they're taking down the trees.
Yeah, I think that's... It's probably a subcontractor for the light company. Probably taking stuff down for them. Yeah, I saw them the other day on there.
We're finishing up some bridge work on Bridge Number 68, which is on Meridian Road just south of 300 South. Just talked to Ed about it. They're going to have to keep, kind of keep it closed until probably Wednesday, probably noon. They'll probably open it back up. We poured the approach slab on it before Thanksgiving and that turned out great, so they're going to try, they're going to get surface sealed today. They thought about doing it Saturday, but I think with all the freezing fog and everything else, the moisture content was just not quite right, so they're going to be doing that today. Their last four on the foundation is today, so they're going to get riprap probably today on one side, riprap on the other side, so that should be cleaned up here by the end of this week for sure. Talked to Ed and Jerry again about the, some culver work this past week or this upcoming year, 2016. Going to be putting out some quotes. Hope to have those around by the next board meeting, so we can take those quotes sometime in January. That's what I'm thinking. The stop sign, the flashing LED stop signs have been ordered for 300 West and State Road 218. So, and that's like mid-December, we should be able to get those and we still haven't gotten approval back from the state to allow us to do that, so that should be coming here pretty quick. The noise ordinance, I had another conversation with Dana Plattner and, not that it's getting cumbersome, but it's, you've got to cross your Ts and dot your Is on that, so how I'm going to, somebody might have to just sit out there with a, with a noise meter and just monitor. Now, that could take a couple days to do that of eight hours a day, just sitting there monitoring.
So they're saying we actually have to show that there's noise there in order to post a sign?
Correct. I mean, you have to justify it. Then what is that level to be justified at? Then that's, you know, how far, so you have to actually monitor the noise, where are you going to put the sign? You know, I'd want to make sure that I do everything right according to the state, so I don't get all this information and all of a sudden, well, it's no good because you weren't in the right location. So I'm trying to track down that.
Appreciate you working on it. Thank you.
Bridge 79, it's across Rock Creek on 200 South. It was brought to our attention from our countywide bridge inventory, USI. We got a little bit of issue out there, so we're trying to get that taken care of. Structurally, it's, it's fine, but there's just a little bit of minor wear and tear on it and so it has to do with the little deterioration of the side of the box beam, so structurally it's fine, it just needs some attention to it. So it kind of goes back with Ed with the county highway, just kind of going back and doing some maintenance on it and so we've got a maintenance list to keep on going back to, whether it be riprap, slope walls and stuff like that. Not that I have all your money spent for 2016, but it's, we're putting used to it.
Do we have a procedure to just get the stone off the decks during the dry time?
Usually, usually I try to do something like that in the spring of the year after we get through with our sand and salt in the winter time. Usually go out with the air compressor and then try and clean out the gutters and stuff like that. So usually we're going to crew in the spring. Just something on the stop signs too, we did get the check from the residents that we're going to pay for that, so we have the money for that already.
I'd like to go back to the jake break ordinance. The jake break ordinance. At my district meeting last week at the annual commissioners conference, we spoke about all the counties in northeast Indiana that have that in place. The hardest part about that ordinance, which we have in place in different areas, is the fact that once it's been put up, it's policing it. And the consensus around all of the counties in northeast Indiana was that it's tough to impose even though we try, but because of that, I mean, it's in good faith that we do this and that, you know, some truckers will adhere to that, but it actually takes a police officer, sheriff's deputy to sit there to monitor that and the, and throughout the whole room, everyone spoke and we even had state police commissioners that were in place and former sheriffs that I didn't call on because I knew what the answer was and he didn't need to be burdened by it. But anyway, to sit there and monitor that with a decibel meter, et cetera, honestly, myself is, and I know the other commissioners, we want to try to help, but in the absence of the crime rate and the lack of sheriff's deputies on the road, sometimes it becomes a little burden. But I'm sure if we can put something in place in time, if there's, what, what the remedy was, was the fact that if there's a really bad location was they were taking deputies and sitting them out there for a period of time so the word got out that that was an area, kind of like a speed trap. So that might be something we look at in the future, but just wanted to share that briefly.
And you can't use the word jake break, it's got to be engine brake.
It's got to be engine brake.
Right. Yeah, you've got to cover the whole gamut, not just for a C break by Jacobs, you know how that goes.
We've had a couple states put that up and have to go spend a lot of money taking the signs down and redo it, so if that happens, we will do it right.
I never knew that.
I'd kind of heard about it, but I had never heard, you know, verbatim until I investigated and then Francis, he told me about it.
Was the gist of what you sent me from the state that jake breaking is good? I mean, some is good.
For the trucking industry.
Yeah, for the trucking.
Yeah, for the trucking. And that, the ordinance, you'd have to, you just can't say it's prohibited, you've got to set the decimal, what, decibel?
Certain locations it's not, I mean, just because of the population, I think that's, that's where it comes into play. And then we have to set the decimal with the max.
And our ordinance just prohibits?
Yes.
Breaking throughout the county? No, no mention of any decibel level?
Correct.
Okay.
Work in progress.
Thanks for working with that. Appreciate it.
Come on. And then when you set that for, you know, a six inch exhaust and then there's this eight and all of a sudden it goes out of whack.
Yeah. Sometimes there's...
Oh, yeah.
Stacks are longer, stacks are shorter and, you know, it just makes it tough. More than the trucking company I ever thought about getting into.
Saves brake wear.
It does. I know what to do.
Yes. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Roger, you're up next.
Morning.
Morning.
Um, not a lot to report. The, we've been doing end of year, helping end of year purchasing for technology and office supplies and stuff like that with some of the offices and that's been about it. Well, we've got a, we're helping the sheriff's department with a, with a project here in their central dispatch office here today. I'm supposed to be there, here pretty soon, so, but, yeah, I mean, other than that, pretty routine stuff. So, any questions?
Nope. You guys are doing a fine job.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. I don't see Bobby. We'll leave her on the list, maybe she'll be back or be over soon. Mike, your next.
Morning. Good morning.
Morning.
All right. I'm going to start off with the authorization to proceed. You may have a copy of it from Snyder Corporation. We're looking at going with them for another three years on providing the web feature service link between Wells County and the state's GIS portal. Basically, we had, three years ago from today, basically, agreed with the state that we would share the parcel, street and address layers with them that goes on the Indiana map service that anybody can look at and it also has different state layers, but they're, they're looking at pulling together a statewide databases of all the local government counties and cities that have GIS information.
Michael, wasn't that the best part about that with IMAP was the fact that we as a county had to pay for everything and then they wanted it dumped on their website?
That was originally how it was going to work. Now, they have, what we're doing right now and this going in the future, the state is actually providing a grant to pay for this service. They actually pay $2,000 basically a year for the three coming years and then we will, basically, we bill them and we get that and then we can turn around and pay the $1,000 that we owe the Snyder Corporation and we already have a thousand sitting in that account for this upcoming year, so. So basically, we're just asking to continue our process right now and then for 16, 17 and 18.
Motion accepted.
Second.
Aye.
Three, zero.
Did you bring one, Michael?
Yes, I did bring one. Yep. I think it only has one place to sign, so.
Let the president sign now.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right here.
You want me to make a copy for you, Beth, or do you?
Yes, please. You can just get it.
Okay. And then, second reason for coming in front of you today, we're here to, to ask your permission to work on co-locating the Bluffton Building Department in, in office space in our office and the plan commission's office space upstairs in the annex building. The reasons why we're looking at doing this is there, since the, the start of the Bluffton Building Department, the beginning of this year, our main complaint was is that we still had to send people back and forth between the buildings. So we wanted to see if there was a way that we could create basically a one-stop permitting location. And we're kind of looking at it the same vein as having the health department in our office in the same building when people need a septic approval before they can get their house, houses permit, that we go back and forth, but we're in the same building, so it makes it very easy for us to walk the person down the hall and say, hey, this is the person you need to contact in that regard. So we're trying to mirror that idea with this process. We're also trying to avoid the idea of the, of the citizen getting the runaround because they may come to our office with a building permit question and then we have to have them go over there, then they may have another question that is something that our office deals with, so you have somebody traveling back and forth all the time trying to figure that out. So we're, we're trying to avoid that perception. One of the benefits of doing the move is we're going to move our, basically, it's starting to take where our small meeting room area is right now and we're going to move that into where the coroner's office is, which is just right around the corner from our office. That has been worked out with him and the health department that currently occupy that space. Everything's okay on that regards, but then everybody in the annex building that will be given keys to that room will be able to use that as their own meeting area. So instead of it being in our office and being awkward if people were having a meeting for a different office in there, now it'll be someplace that they can share, so there'll be kind of a benefit with that. And then, kind of finally, our office, because of us being in place since 1971, is the place that most people still look to as far as where they get their permits, so we're the better known location of the, the two places right now, so it makes sense to continue keeping people coming to where they expect to go for their permitting needs. So, that's right now, kind of the workings of the agreement would be that both offices would continue to function separately from each other as far as financially, that we would just provide the space and the general services that are already provided to that room, but nothing more. So if there's any equipment or changes needed, that would be on the city's side. Staffing would be completely separate from each other. It would just be the fact that we're co-located in the same area, no different than the health department in our office currently.
So for the city's inspector, the move would not be caused by lack of space for them?
No, they have location in their building that works for them.
Okay, so in order to work hand in hand between the two entities, that's why you want them or they would want to?
Yeah, this, this was purely a conversation of how to resolve the one outstanding issue. We have the online permitting process, which is going well and it's kind of early stages and that will allow people that want to do it online, but we still have the need of providing the, kind of the one-stop location for those that still want to do it in person, which is probably still going to be a majority of the people.
Will the, will the office be mostly manned or unmanned, would you estimate?
As a right.
Maybe they can say that.
It will be, it will be basically manned from eight, eight in the morning till three in the afternoon. I now have a part-time assistant, so when I'm out, out and doing inspections, I've got it to where I'm in early and then she's there for four hours and then I'm in then in the afternoon, so it gives me a four-hour window to be out in the field.
Sure.
So, yeah, it will be.
Yeah. So there will be a presence.
And access, I guess, to any type of funds is that, I mean, I don't want to create it a problem, I guess, where there would be monies that, I mean, you'll have a lock and key or...
We would, we would deal, we would deal with our permitting and money and collect our fees separate.
Okay.
There would be, there would be commingling of funds.
Right. I think it would be a benefit to the county to do it. I just really, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't ask about rent.
It's basically if, if rent was required, it won't happen, is my understanding from the...
Okay, so we're doing this mainly to serve the citizens.
Correct.
I just want to make sure I'm clear on that because that would be a question that would be asked of us.
Yes.
I'd already know from like the Solway's district, you know, city, a buck.
But that's kind of where I'm going with this because almost for a formality of it, it's not so much the, the cost of it, but like Roy's getting.
Well, I don't know that you need to necessarily state a monetary consideration. The consideration is that the relocation would assist the county's offices as well as, and more importantly, the, the county's citizens.
Right. And I'm fine with that.
I think it should be updated either annually, biannually, every three years or whatever, just so if there's a need to make alterations or changes. Or you could state that that's, you know, any, any agreement is, can be terminated after 90 days' notice or something like that. I don't... Yeah, I wouldn't be agreementless, something like that. Yeah, I, I wouldn't worry about one year or two or whatever, just make it an easy, an easy divorce if things doesn't work out for either side.
Yep.
You could put something together. Oh, sure.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I just...
Yeah, it just questions people.
No, I understand that. Yeah, this was purely of conversation of how to resolve the one outstanding issue. We have the online permitting process, which is going well, and it's kind of early stages, and that will allow people that wanna do it online, but we still have the need of providing the, kind of, the one-stop location for those that still wanna do it in person, which is probably still gonna be a majority of the people.
Will the office be mostly manned or unmanned, would you estimate?
As a right, yeah.
It will be, it will be basically manned from eight, eight in the morning till three in the afternoon. I now have a part-time assistant, so when I'm out, out and doing inspections, I've got it to where I'm in early, and then she's there for four hours, and then I'm in then in the afternoon. So, it gives me a four-hour window to be out in the field.
Sure, sure.
So, yeah, it will be.
Yeah.
Somewhere there.
So, there will be a presence.
And access, I guess, to any type of funds, is that, I mean, I don't wanna create it a problem, I guess, where there would be monies that, I mean, you'll have a lock-and-key or?
We would, we would deal, we would deal with our permitting and money and collect our fees separate.
Okay.
There would be, there would be commingling of funds.
Yep.
I think it would be a benefit to the county to do it. I just really, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't ask about rent.
It's basically, if rent was required, it won't happen, is my understanding from the.
Okay, so, we're doing this mainly to serve the citizens.
Correct.
I just wanna make sure I'm clear on that, because that would be a question that would be asked of us.
Yes.
I'd already know, for like the Soloway's district, you know, city, a buck.
Well, that's kinda where I'm going with this, because almost for a formality of it, it's not so much the cost of it, but like Roy's getting.
Well, I don't know that you need to necessarily state a monetary consideration. The consideration is that the relocation would assist the county's offices as well as, and more importantly, the county's citizens.
Right, and I'm fine with that.
I think it should be updated either annually, biannually, every three years, or whatever, just so if there's a need to make alterations or changes. Or you could state that that's, you know, any agreement is, can be terminated after 90 days' notice or something like that. I don't. Yeah, I wouldn't be agreementless, something like that. Yeah, I wouldn't worry about one year or two, or whatever, just make it an easy divorce if thing doesn't work out for either side.
Yep.
You could put something together. Oh, sure.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I just.
Okay.
Yeah, it just questions people.
No, I understand that, exactly, and that, yeah, those.
Because in the end, it benefits everybody.
Yeah, and that's, that's what we're trying to provide here, and, yeah, we understand that. Basically, there's still be no additional expenses to the county, 'cause we provide all the services to that room as if it is occupied right now.
Mm-hmm.
And any, any equipment that would be needed would be on the burden of the city that purchased.
We anticipate this to be up and going January 1 of '16.
That would be the goal, at least by then.
So, do we need to have Roy put together an agreement that states what you've just said, plus the termination clause, and then we can sign off on it?
I think that'd be great.
Do that at the next meeting.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
All right. Any other questions or items for me while I'm here? Okay, thank you.
Bobby, we have you next.
Hi, so, how are you guys? Good. I'm here for just a couple of things. One, I just wanted to give you an update on where the projects are right now. I'm getting ready to have a little leave of the, for surgery here in a couple of days, so I wanted to give you a heads-up that we're in pretty good shape for all of our projects to have been completed by the time I'm gone. So, that will be not anything that we have to worry too much about. Pipes and attic were finished this week, looked very good, looked nice. I think it's gonna do the job. Concern being with our, the gutter system around the building may, just heads-up, just maybe something we wanna have to look at next spring. Somehow, there is a lot of stuff still getting down in those pipes from the drainage system, like steel cistics and stuff like that, so there may need to be a grid, grid system put on top of that where it drains down in, that possibly there's not one right now. So, just something that we may be looking at.
Just measure a screen.
Yeah, to kind of, yeah, keep it from actually getting into the pipe area. But there's a little more drop, and it's a little, cleanouts are in there, so that's gonna help, and so we do have some stuff in play, so. But it looks really good, so they finished that this week. The cement on the east side of the steps that they were going to replace upon their own, time running out, I told them to wait till spring, we would cover it with a rubber mat for now, like we have, and they said they would take care of it in the spring. They appreciated that, because they also agreed it was getting too late in the season for them to go ahead and do it in October. So, so, we're okay on an agreement for spring for that. Cables in the gutter on the probation side of the building, which is on the east side also, that would possibly help with any seepage into the building. We're trying to, because that wall stays moist, we're trying to see if this would help to eliminate some of that for this coming year. So far, it stayed pretty dry-ish this spring and summer with the new stuff we done last year up there, but we wanted to cover our bases in case it would freeze and seep into the building like it does in our recorder's office, sometimes from the balcony from that.
Was that a heated cable?
It's a heat-heated cable through there. We've done, it was installed two weeks ago, so we're good there. It is up and running, and hopefully, that will take care of any problems we have on that wall. So, that's done. Steps on the north side that were being sealed and back rod put in, and stuff, back rod put in and stuff like that, to help with any seepage under the step areas and stuff, that has been completed as of last week also. So, we are good there. Carpets have been cleaned in both buildings for the year, so we'll go there for another, probably try to get it on a every other year or so, rotation, or every year, one year one building, one year the X, starting this year. So, hopefully, they've all been done this year, but hopefully, next year, then we can go on an every-other-year basis, so. So, that has been completed. So, with that being said, that was the majority of the jobs that are out there right now. Point for being here this year is 'cause it is the last pay coming out of our budget for this year is today, for claims in that. But we do have the, the option of doing some encumbrances from the 2015 money into the 2016 that we could use for jobs if they are already in play to do. Okay, we have a couple of quotes for that tunnel area or entrance area there at the front of the building where we come into the security area through the, through the outside there. One of which is from Keels that I have, that I can show you here. It has a quote to put a drop ceiling out there, two offsets with doors and walls to kind of offset that, that we can store our salt and at least a snow blower in there out of sight, and putting new lighting out there to brighten that area up. And so, I do have a quote for that from them to keep in mind. Maybe I do. I know, wait a minute, I thought I had it spinning together. The top one is the only one we're, we're looking at. The other one is another one they did while they were here, but it is on the top one, and I'm not gonna say the price, because I don't know if you're gonna let me put another one, and if so, then we won't be able to do it by encumbering it this year. Yeah, so, the front, the top quote will include, and you can say it if you choose to, I mean, I just didn't know. I hate to put a price out there if it's something that you wanna check further into, which I felt was pretty unreasonable for what they're going to be doing out there. I didn't feel it was out of, out of source at all.
Is there a lot currently out there for electric? Able to handle what we need, or are we pulling new wires?
I think it just needs to be, the wiring is fine. It's just new fixtures into the drop ceilings that would be a drop fixture with a higher voltage of a light to put more light out there, and an extra fixture, possible.
Did you talk to somebody else about this?
I have not, because they were here doing a job when I just had them go ahead and quote that. So, that was the only, and a lot of them won't do what they consider, what they call smaller jobs, and this is the small.
The problem that's going on right now is a lot of contractors are busy.
Extremely busy.
Lot of, lot of work out there, and so, one, it's even hard to get somebody to quote something. Two, usually when it comes in, it's usually high. So, the competitive level and county saving money right now is pretty tight. Would you agree with that?
Absolutely.
And because you've got your bigger competitors that do bigger buildings, and they don't, this is considered a very small job for them, and they would rather do the bigger buildings to earn more money versus a smaller building that wouldn't take much of the time.
Is that something we can take under advisement for a couple of weeks?
I won't be here for six.
Okay.
Or five, anyway.
But if we want to, we can get it.
Yeah, oh, yeah. The only, the only reason I'm bringing it up now is I won't be able to encumber, and this is just one of the two things I'm bringing up, I have to have an approval on the quote to be able to encumber the money from 2015 into 2016. And by transferring, in this last transfer coming up, I would be able to transfer from seven line items to be able to pay for either today.
Yeah, the one before the transfers.
Not like tomorrow, today. Yeah, I would have, no.
She can do the transfer, we'll have to begin, you know, we do transfers on the 23rd, so we have to have those in probably by the 16th, so we've got a couple of days before our next meeting. I mean, we have.
I make a motion, yeah, thanks.
But I think.
I make a motion to encumber the funds, because otherwise, it won't be on the, I don't wanna lose the money.
Right. Because it's rare.
I don't necessarily like doing it that way, but.
I know, and that's me either, but, and the other one was the seamless floors, because if you didn't do that and did this, either one of them would have to be in for this year, one or the other of them, so.
How does that compare cost-wise?
Cost-wise, I can roughly encumber about $6,000 out of this year's funds. The floor quote that we have right now, that I've already showed you, and it's already come out, so it's like $2,600 for the floor, for that area, and.
So, this project would probably do more to make it look better.
It is, yeah, it really is.
Nice to do both of them at the same time.
Yeah, and the only reason I hesitate.
Well, you wanna do this first before you make the floor?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah, definitely.
We could actually do this, this winter, if we do this, encumber the first of the year. We could actually do this one this year. The floors can't be done till spring because of the temperatures out there. The other question I had is if we do that, it may not get done till spring, because I don't know if they're gonna wanna do the floors in one pour versus two offset rooms, basically, that's going to be out there by doing that project there. So, that was my other concern. You know, I would love to see it done in January, and they would love to do that in January, because they need inside work. So, it would be a, you know, a good winter project to do that this winter, but I don't know how that would, if that would alter this price on the floor a little bit, one way or the other, because it happened to go into a little room there.
I don't think.
You don't think it'll be a big difference? Okay.
I think it's just gonna be on square footage.
Okay, perfect.
I think that's.
Either way, so, okay. And so, that's what I wanted to make sure.
So, second the motion for encumbrance.
Aye.
Yeah, I just wanna.
No, you're fine.
Get money used if I can, 'cause I need to.
I'm not gonna lose it.
Right, absolutely.
All right, that was all I have.
Thanks, Bobby.
If you need anything, I got a phone, just give me a holler.
Good luck, sir.
Okay, thank you, and we'll see ya in the first of the year.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, monthly reports.
Okay, well, I have all kinds of stuff here. Okay, I've been sending you information regarding the blanket bond that we do need to have placed by January 1, and got quotes from two different people for the exact same amount, because it's the exact same company. So, it's just basically who you want to go with, and that's all I need to.
So, who does, those are bonds?
Right now, currently.
Insurance, currently, are they both?
Currently, all of our bonds are through Star Insurance. They do all of our elected officials' bonds, and they do most of it.
Insurance wise, is it Dick Randall?
Uh-huh, all of our county's liability insurance and property damage, that's all through Dick Randall, and those are the two people I have the quotes through. They both quote with the same exact company, the annual premium, it's the annual premium, it's the same amount with.
Is it one that's easier to work with or contact?
It really doesn't make any difference whatsoever. I mean, it really absolutely makes no difference whatsoever. They're both great people to work with, it, it doesn't matter. It's completely up to you guys, and I think either one of them are fine with whichever person we go with, you know? So, I've heard from both of them, and they said, "Well, whichever one, you know, you have to go with," so.
I'm wide open, guys, it makes me no difference. I don't know if you wanna keep all the bonds with one, and all the insurance with one.
Maybe that makes sense. That might be easier.
Probably.
Okay. That was Star, then?
That was with Star.
Motion.
Well, that was the bonds, and, but not our, the other stuff goes through Dick Randall.
Yeah, all of our insurance stays with that.
But this is for bonds?
This is just a bond.
So, we're keeping our bonds.
It's a.
Separately from.
The same company.
Yeah.
It's with CNA.
I'm okay with either, but whatever you wanna make the motion, I don't think. Your choice.
Motion to go with Star.
Second.
Aye. Easy, real.
Okay, I will go ahead and contact them. The total amount, which was very good, was $198 for an annual to cover everybody for a $5,000 bond that handles money within the Kent County, with the exception of all of the elected officials with their bonds that are by statute, set differently by statute, so ours are all separately. I'll get them, send them on that.
Does that need all three signatures, or?
It doesn't have a signature address.
Okay.
All I have is the quote for them, and if so, I will have you come in, if that's good, because I don't.
I'll just be a continuous.
I don't see that there's a place for anyone to sign it.
Okay, give me a call. I'm not going anywhere, so.
Okay. Okay, we did an ad, ran an ad in the news banner for some appointments that you have coming up at the beginning of the year, and the one we had for the Wabash River Heritage Corner.
Corridor.
Corridor, commission appointment, and we did get one person respond to that, and I did send you that through email also. We did not receive anything more for that, that one, that's the one we received, so if you wanna act on that one. The other one was for the Area Plan Commission, and we received a couple more after I had sent you the other ones out, so there is one for each of you, there's four different ones, so I'll, each of you take one and pass it off down, so you have those four.
Say since, I guess. Do you think? I don't know.
There's one for each of you.
I thought you were sharing.
Oh, this might be on back now.
No, I'm sorry, you have to take one of each and pass it down, so you each.
Oh, that's how you wanna do that. I think you have already set up for us.
I'm sorry, I meant to do it before the meeting, and I forgot to.
All right.
So, each of you get four different pieces.
Hang on, just leaving.
That's all gonna be fun.
Not each of you getting the same.
I was gonna say, mine looks good.
Yeah, it looks the same as everybody else's.
Okay.
You got that one? Did Roy get one?
Yes.
I just got two, Chris Moore and Todd Fichter.
I don't know.
Chris Moore, Roar, Masterson, I need a Fichter.
Pictures are down there.
I think. First was Todd.
All right. I might go to Roar.
Yeah, probably, I had four.
Just an ish, nope.
That one's that one.
I don't think I have one up there.
Yeah, there you go.
No, I haven't. I got Masterson.
Nope. All right, based on, so we have four now.
Sorry, does everybody have four? Sorry.
All right, I'm looking at this, I'm gonna go over this, we have until next meeting.
We have one more meeting.
Approve that, Michael, if that's, apologize for that, but I'm gonna make a motion to table this until the next meeting.
Any nice response we've had? I second the motion.
Aye. I have a recommendation at that time.
And you'll do the same on the Wabash.
Wabash, I can go ahead and act on, I don't have a problem.
We only have one.
Okay, we have one, so.
And what, what's the name of that?
Ah, here it is.
Suddenly stuck.
There's one for each of you.
I'm gonna take one and pass it on.
Good idea.
Sorry. I might have to give a copy of that.
No, so it's stuck. You guys okay?
Yeah.
I'm fine. Make a motion to appoint to the Wabash River Heritage Corridor Commission Douglas Suddling.
Second.
Aye.
And we also put an alternate on that, so we don't get, we didn't get any responses, and I, we have, our alternate right now is Mrs. Elliott.
Beth, no, Barbara?
Barbara.
You don't.
I could contact her if she's willing to be on as.
Remains on the watch?
Please?
Sure.
Yes, I will do that, so I will, this will be resolution number 2015-11. Requires all three of your signatures.
Motion to approve a resolution 2015-11 for the Wabash River Heritage Corridor Commission.
Second.
Aye.
Perfect. Okay, the last thing I have here, looks like, was the revised travel policy. I sent that out to you, and to also the council, because the council needs to approve that since it does, um...
Motion to approve of resolution 2015-11 for the Walbash River Heritage Corridor Commission.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Bye.
Doug's staying there, too.
Perfect. Okay, the last thing I had here, looks like, was the revised travel policy. I sent that out to you, and to also the council, because the council needs to approve that since it does also require the reimbursement for travel. And I did get that from one of the councilmen, and I think Roy revised that for me, to change what we currently have on our mileage reimbursement, to go with whatever the federal rate is, that way it just automatically changes as the federal rate changes, which is a great idea. I almost wrote it that way to begin with, too. So that's the revised one that I had. We had to make the change on that because it didn't specifically say that we need a detailed receipt for mail reimbursement, and State Board of Accounts does require a detailed receipt, so our policy didn't really say that, and we've had people not give me detailed receipts and want reimbursement, you know, on mails, and we do need that detailed receipt basically saying that you didn't sit and drink alcohol, you know, for your mail, because we don't, we can't reimburse for alcoholic beverages. So, and then I also made the change from $26 to $30 a day, just go up $4, you know, because of the rate has been at 26 for a long, 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 long time, and we all know that it has increased. So if you're good with that, then we could, you have to approve, and then also I would take it to the council, and I'll be waiting for them to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Easy, real.
I have one, two, three, four copies for you to sign.
There's your stuff.
That's all I have. Oh, I did have a couple of things, but, sorry, I forwarded you the email I received from Mr. Whipper, that he would no longer be able to serve on our alcohol beverage board, so do you want me to advertise for that, or...
Sounds like a pan to me.
Sure, I would think so.
And also that on the 10th, at 12 o'clock, we will be doing, raising the Indiana bicentennial flag, and we will have a proclamation that we will read during that ceremony, and so we would ask that the news banner could be present, you know, at that time. I'll get you, it's at 12 noon on the 10th.
The 10th, not the 11th.
Oh, the 11th, I'm sorry, the 11th, at 12 noon at the 11th. Sorry, thank you, Tammy. That marks the anniversary, 199th anniversary, admitting Indiana as the 19th state to the Union, so that's what we'll be doing at that time, so. We'd ask the news banner to be there, and anybody else that would like to be present?
I'll put it in, I'll try to be there. I'll take and send those tomorrow night.
Thank you.
And that's all?
That's it?
Okay, no.
Okay.
I'm hoping. Audience?
Talked too much today.
Okay, entertain the motion, Andrew.
Someone.
Thank you, appreciate it.